I'll start with our land acknowledgement. The city of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederate villages of Leechan. We acknowledge the genocide placed on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt as owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloneye tribe. We thank them for their contributions which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The city of Albany commits to sustaining an ongoing relationship with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home. City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Hansor Romero.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Mickey.
Here.
Vice Mayor McQuaid.
Here.
And Mayor Lopez.
Here. All right, we will begin with ceremonial matters. Proclamation for Lung Cancer Awareness Month, which will be read by Councilmember Mickey. And in attendance today, we have Leanna and Hannah to receive the proclamation. If you'd like to step beside Councilmember Mickey and you can give words after he reads the proclamation.
City of Albany proclamation. In recognition of Lung Cancer Awareness Month, November 2025. Whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer death among men and women in the United States and Albany, county forms more deaths than colon cancer, breast cancer, and prostate cancer combined. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control, there are 3,445 new lung cancer cases and 2,225 deaths because of lung cancer between 2017 and 2021 in the Aloneye County. And whereas, the five-year survival rate for localized lung cancer is approximately 60% in only 24% of lung cancers are diagnosed at this stage. And whereas, screening for lung cancer for high-risk individuals using low-dose compute tomography can lead to an early detection of lung cancer and save lives, reducing the mortality by 20% when compared to screening by chest X-ray in the National Lung Screening Trial and reducing the risk of death at 10 years by 24% in men and 33% in women as demonstrated by another large randomized trial. And whereas, funding for lung cancer research trials far behind funding for research for many other cancers and additional research is needed in early diagnosis, screening, and treatment for lung cancers, as well as in lung cancer affecting women and lung cancer health disparities. And whereas lung cancer incidence is decreasing twice as fast in men as it is in women, each year more women die from lung cancer than breast cancer. And by 2035, more women will die from lung cancer than men. And whereas, African-Americans have the highest lung cancer incidence and mortality of all races, and disparities in lung cancer screening, diagnosis, treatment, and mortality are well-characterized among African-Americans and other racial minorities. And whereas lung cancer is, sorry, whereas lung cancer in individuals who never smoke is the seventh-leading cause of cancer-related death and accounts for 17,000 to 26,000 deaths in the U.S. every year. 60 to 70% of individuals diagnosed with lung cancer who never smoked are women. And the proportion of lung cancer diagnosed in people who never smoked is increasing in the U.S. And whereas radon is the leading cause of lung cancer among individuals who never smoked and the second-leading cause of lung cancer overall. And whereas, the stigma surrounding lung cancer creates barriers to early diagnosis, treatment, and funding for research, has a detrimental impact on the quality of life of people diagnosed with lung cancer and hinders awareness of and research into lung cancer risk factors other than smoking. And whereas lung cancer research is leading to breakthroughs in the identification of genetic alterations associated with lung cancer and in the development of lung cancer treatments, including immunotherapies and targeted therapies. And whereas organizations working in Albany such as the American Lung Cancer Screening Initiative and Women's Lung Cancer Forum are committed to educating about lung cancer and lung cancer screening and working to increase lung cancer screening rates in Albany. Now therefore, the city of Albany hereby proclaims November 2025 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month in Albany and recognizes the need for research in lung cancer affecting women and lung cancer health disparities and encourages all citizens to learn about lung cancer and early detection through lung cancer screening. Signed, Robin D. Lopez, Mayor.
Hello, my name's Leanna Lee.
And I'm Hannah Papoy.
And we're members of the American Lung Cancer Screening Initiative, commonly abbreviated to ALSE. ALSE is a national nonprofit composed of students and physicians working together to raise awareness on lung cancer and lung cancer screening.
On behalf of the ALSE team, we would like to thank the Albany City Council for recognizing Lung Cancer Awareness Month this November 2025. It's an honor to be here today. Lung cancer is now the leading cause of the cancer-related deaths worldwide. It is the second-most common cancer in the U.S. with an estimate of over 230,000 diagnoses and over 127,000 deaths this year alone. Anyone with lungs can get lung cancer. It claims more lives than breast, prostate, and colon cancers combined, and lung cancer has become the deadliest cancer in the U.S.
However, it doesn't have to be. Early detection through lung cancer screening can catch lung cancer early when it's easier to treat and survival rates are higher. Unfortunately, the national screening rate is as low as 18% and only 16% of high-risk Californians are being screened. We strongly encourage all individuals aged 50 to 80 with a smoking history to ask their doctor about lung cancer screening. It is also important to spread the word to anyone who may benefit from screening.
By advocating together, we can help bring awareness to lung cancer and remove the stigma surrounding it. By disseminating together, we can increase screening rates and decrease lung cancer mortality. Together, we can help save lives. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll just say, I always appreciate when fellow Golden Bears reach out or moments of advocacy. And I do know there was a request to take picture with all the city councils, so we can all step down really quick. Thank you.
Additionally, we have some pins in honor of Lung Cancer Awareness Month. So if you all would like to take a few before the end, yeah.
All right, any comments from council?
Yeah, I'll comment. As somebody who had an anomaly seen in his lungs this summer and got two biopsies, it was just by happenstance, but I can at least say the biopsies were painless and I got to enjoy some sedation, which was first in my life and enjoyable, so I encourage people to get screened.
Thank you, Councilmember Jordan. And thank you again, Leanna and Hannah, for being out here today. That said, we'll move on to item number five, City Manager's Report. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Reminder that we're preparing for storm season and have likely already entered it, as we all know. With the recent forecasted inclement weather, residents can visit the city's storm webpage, for informational resources in preparation for and during storms. These are regularly updated by our Public Information Officer in coordination with Public Works staff, really if there's anything of significance, and also certainly by our emergency response team as well as needed. Appreciation to Public Works for continuing to do storm drain cleaning and catch basin cleaning throughout the season, knowing that we do have areas that fill with leaves pretty quickly. So it's an ongoing job, absolutely. In that regard, we also have sandbags available as Albany prepares for rainy season. Supplies for sandbags are available free of charge with proof of Albany residency. Up to 10 sandbags can be obtained from the fire department right here on our corner behind the city hall. And the sand is located at the Ocean View Park parking lot, 900 Buchanan Street, just down the street. Also, if you need assistance in filling your sandbag, city staff are available to do that, calling Albany Cares. Yesterday, the fire department and public works staff hosted an Albany Hill Fire Resilience Event where those that attended were able to learn about fire resilient landscaping, home fire hardening, and management practices on Albany Hill that create resiliency for the hill and neighborhood. Again, appreciation to staff both in the public works department and fire department for taking the time out to do this event. It's again a way that we're moving parts with our mini expos to really reach different sectors of the community and meet people where they are in the neighborhoods. We also had a business expo, which was well-attended for the most part. Business owners and business folks are very busy people. So we were happy to have who we did and will continue to promote these expos throughout the year. We had a presentation from our consultant team and really just getting our businesses connected with city services and what may be available to them to help with promotion and business resiliency. Sideware Repair Program Phase 10 is planned for completion of construction by February of '26. During construction, heavy equipment will be mobilized and residents should expect traffic delays when traveling around the construction area. Parking may be restricted during work hours as well. And the updates on the locations and the work underway is on our website under Public Works. Reminder of the gallery art exhibit, October 25th through January 15th. Albany artist Lisa Rose brings two decades of imaginative character studies to the Albany Community Center for expressive and theatrical figures rooted in drawing, printmaking, and digital media. So please make sure you get a chance to see that. And upcoming on Solano, hopefully you've seen the posters. Solano Avenue Association invites all to Solano Avenue, a wonderful place with winter on Solano, December 7th, noon to 5:00. This program showcases live music, entertainment, activities, and specials offered by the businesses. And Draft Plan Bay Area 2050 Plus is the latest long-range plan to guide growth and investment across the region's nine counties and 101 cities. The plan seeks to advance an integrated vision for a Bay Area that is affordable, connected, diverse, healthy, and vibrant for all by 2050. You can read the Draft Plan Bay Area and provide comments on bayarea.org/draftplan. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Do we have any questions from members on city council? Not seeing any? Any comments from members of the public regarding City Manager's Report? Not seeing any? All right, we will move on to item number six, Good to the City, Public Comment Period. This is for persons desiring to address city council on items that are not on the agenda. City Clerk.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Stephen Albert. The city of Albany adheres to the absolute minimum state mandate of only alerting those within 300 feet of proposed new construction by mailing postcards but 10 days before a first project hearing. Or Albany does not require posting of a sign at the project site detailing proposed construction. My wife and I and over a dozen individuals have requested the city consider expanding public notification beyond 300 feet as enacted by other California municipalities. To date, the council has steadfastly refused to address this issue. Alerting only those within 300 feet limits public discourse along the Planning and Zoning Commission proposed, and the council has then pushed through new projects, no matter how inappropriate, with minimal awareness and input from the community. Such was the case for the oversized, five-story mixed-commercial residential modern box proposed for 1600 Solano. Only 73 properties were alerted before the initial Planning and Zoning Commission study meeting on January 26, 2022. Density bonus waivers allowed for the building's increased height, no setback, and no resident parking. Nonetheless, the Planning and Zoning Commission had the responsibility to guide the submitted plans toward greater compatibility with the neighborhood and clearly failed to do so. A review of the videos of the initial study session and the subsequent meeting on April 27th revealed that far more discussion focused on bicycle storage than on the building's mass and design and exterior. During April 27th Public Comment Session, three attorneys, including former Mayor Robert Chiesti, questioned the city's application of density bonus for the ground-floor medical offices and whether Solano Avenue qualified as a transit corridor. State law 330 allows for up to five meetings to consider a project, and the study session does not count. During the public comment of the January and April Zoning Commission meetings, a total of 42 individuals clearly opposed the project. One was neutral, only two supported it, one being the applicant. During the single council meeting on January 1, devoted to 1600 Solano, despite 43 individuals appearing and expressing legitimate concerns about the traffic safety, Vice Mayor Tiedemann, knowing the intensity of feelings in many submitted emails and several calls for continuance, Mayor Jordan moved for immediate approval. The approved plans for 1600 Solano violate every single aspect of Albany's planning and zoning mission statement shown here. That structure is not functionally appropriate for its site nor harmonious with the adjacent Craftman era buildings. Of note, councilmembers Lopez, Mickey, and Hansor Romero were not serving in 2022 when 1600 Solano was passed, and Councilwoman McQuaid objected to the project. My wife will continue.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, I am Celeste Marks. As documented, despite overwhelming opposition, questions regarding the legality of the city's application of density bonus and calls for continuance, including one from then-Councilwoman McQuaid, both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the council pushed through this highly controversial project during single sessions. A video of the June 1st council meeting documents numerous individuals concerned about the increased traffic congestion at the dangerous Tacoma Ordway Solano infrastructure and the risk of injuries due to the lack of a drop-off area for children attending the applicant's ground-floor orthodontist practice. Incredibly, Community Development Director Bond offered that in his opinion the project would not result in increased traffic congestion. There's no factual basis for that since no traffic study was ever conducted. The meeting videos clearly show that the Planning and Zoning Commission, community development staff, and the council ignored or downplayed the community's legitimate concerns regarding 1600 Solano. Councilwoman Jordan, then-serving as mayor, wrote that he felt compelled to vote in favor of the project because he felt a lawsuit for the applicant. Perhaps a lawsuit might have occurred, but we will never know because the council did not approach the applicant to consider suggested mitigation since the project was approved in a single session. Regarding the central issue of this presentation, there is no legal reason preventing Albany from expanding public notification for new construction. And the council has run out of reasons why it refuses to address this issue. If the council generally believes that alerting only those within 300 feet for all new construction just 10 days before the first hearing is appropriate, then defend this practice, submit 300-foot notification as a meeting agenda item to allow for extended, in-depth public discussion. Similar to the recent concerns about the lack of public notice regarding the beach volleyball court proposed for Old Shute and View Park, the city of Albany seems disinterested in alerting the community about new project. Lastly, while density bonus may allow the five-story structures on Solano Avenue, we and many others remain opposed to the ill-conceived desire of 1600 Solano, which is utterly inappropriate for that site and the manner in which this project was railroaded through. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Hi, yeah, my name's Jean Wu. I live in Albany, and I have been here several times before because I'm still extremely concerned that we're not moving forward on getting a resilience hub. I just attended the Ava Community Advisory Meeting, and Albany is not on the list of the potential contenders for the first 10 slots, of which it looks like the resilience hubs will only manage to do 20 maximum, and the first $1 million are going to go to the first five. So I'm looking to see if we can get some motions, either in the council or from the Albany Climate Action Committee through the council to pursue developing a resilience hub. And I think we should look into earmarking some of our DD funds, which the city of Albany residents have been putting money into for the past four years, to building the resilience hub in case the Ava Community Energy situation does not pan out, since they seem to be mostly concerned with disadvantaged and low-income communities, of which I don't believe Albany is one. But we still need a resilience hub, and we should look into developing one as soon as possible. Once again, it is pretty clear to many people that we live within a few miles of one of the largest earthquake fall zones in the country. And we are liable to be hit by one, and when it does happen, it won't be just a few cities, it will be a large area of concern and a very difficult situation to remediate. If we have an onsite resilience hub to support the community with food, water, shelter, cooling, communications, and whatever else situation requires, then we will be far ahead of the game. So that is my concern, that we do something now about a resilience hub. I don't imagine it will be built for five years, but getting the funding and getting the planning and getting it constructed is going to take a minimum of two. So please consider this an appeal to put together a motion to instruct the city's staff to work towards developing an adequate resiliency hub for the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, that concludes our public comment portion. It's Member Jordan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to note again, as I did in the last meeting, that state law prohibits consideration of subjective aesthetic matters with those buildings that are coming in under the state density bonus law, which is a law that provides for latitude for the developer if the building includes a certain number of affordable residences. Aesthetic considerations such as whether a building's architecture matches the architecture of nearby buildings, that overrides any local requirements that Albany has. And with regard to the comment of building having no setback, no setbacks are required for buildings in the Solano Avenue Commercial District. There was an early error in one of the staff reports that indicated it did, but that was subsequently corrected.
Thank you, Councilmember Jordan. We'll move on to item number seven, Consent Calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and can be enacted via one motion unless anyone would like to pull any particular item. Do any members of the council wish to pull items from the consent calendar? Not seeing any? Do any members of the public wish to pull an item from the calendar? Not seeing any? I will entertain a motion.
I'll move consent.
I will second.
Thank you. City Clerk.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember Mickey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McQuaid.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yep.
Councilmember Hansor Romero.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. We'll now move on to item number 10, Unfinished Business. We'll start with 10-1, Resolution Amending the City of Albany's Investment Policy to Add a Value Statement Related to Environmental, Social, and Governance Investing. City Staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilwoman. It's your finance director, and I'm a numbers person, so I'm sitting there going, 7. Wait, I thought my number was 10, but there's nothing in between. So I was having a numbers problem, sorry, it took me a moment to get up here. I can blame it on that, right? Okay, welcome to a brief discussion of a follow-up item related to the city of Albany's investment policy and the decision made in September to add ESG investment criteria. So ESG, environmental, social, and governance, allows for including the consideration of criteria associated with those characteristics in addition to the underlying financials of any given investment. And so the council's Audit and Fiscal Sustainability Committee had reviewed a number of strategies associated with potentially incorporating ESG factors into the city's investment policy. And those were brought to the council ultimately in September and adopted. The item went back to the Audit and Fiscal Sustainability Committee in October to consider potentially adding a value statement to the investment policy itself, not the nitty-gritty of the ESG implementation policy, which has the very specific criteria by which the investment advisor can provide direction on trading, et cetera, but the broader policy statement around the investment. That committee held a robust discussion about adding a value statement. And in the item in your packet, there is a draft value statement that has been proposed by the committee to be incorporated into the investment policy. And the investment policy is shown as a redline version showing where that would fall within the policy in order to provide additional context to the city's commitment to ESG investing. And with that, I will turn it back to the committee members and the council as a whole for any additional information and if you have any questions of staff.
Thank you. I will bounce it to our city council members. I will bounce it to our city council members.
You know, I thank you for that wonderful description of the robust discussion. I think I really appreciated both staff's perspective and over time, the consultants' perspective on how we might be able to approach this. In particular, thank you to Councilmember Jordan for bringing together kind of the first draft of kind of how we could approach this. We really wanted to encapsulate, I think, the values that we have heard both as council and both and at our subcommittee meeting in terms of kinds of companies that we'd like to be able to invest in. And I think part of our subcommittee group was understanding that some of the metrics that are currently used in ESG evaluation by third parties perhaps would be best described as they're doing the best they can with knowledge that they can, they can third-party review. However, that is not always, sometimes leaving wanting kind of their ability to provide some of that information. So I think that's probably the important point in number, using multiple sources, that we're not going to be dependent necessarily on one single source on understanding a company's ESG. Councilmember Jordan, anything?
I want to thank Councilmember Mickey for bringing his code-writing eye and expertise to straightening out my writing. My writing is convoluted and not the best, so I very much appreciate you taking that on before the meeting.
Thank you both. I'll check in with our council colleagues really quick. Do we have any question at this moment? Not seeing any. I will take it to public comment. Do we have any public comments on this item? City Clerk. All right, not seeing any public comments on this item. We'll bring it back to council for discussion.
I'm happy to start.
Vice Mayor McQuaid?
I would like us to consider adding one more bullet point between respecting human rights and using multiple sources. I'm going to read it and I think it will get put up on the screen. So we're adding a bullet point, applying consistent human rights principles. City will consider broadly recognized human rights standards when evaluating investments. Any review will rely on established neutral ESG frameworks and will be applied consistently across all countries, companies, and industries in compliance with state and federal law.
I give council a minute or two to marinate on this if need be.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The reliance on ESG frameworks, do you could say more what your thinking is behind that? Because part of the reason for the bullet around human rights is that the ESG rating companies have announced that they're not going to consider human rights violations within war zones because they can't confirm what is going on in an active war zone. And so I just want to make sure this, how does this articulate with that since this references ESG frameworks?
What I'm trying to do is to be sure that it's a neutral, if you will, a neutral playing field and not biased in any way.
I guess my perspective is that, at least on the face of it, seems to potentially create a conflict for the reason for the human rights provision being in there, because it could be understood as referencing back again to ESG rating companies, whether that is the intention or not. I'm inclined of the first sentence. I'm not particularly inclined, at least to that part of the second sentence. And I don't know enough. I guess I would look to the city attorney, was it the last, the final clause? Because I don't know what state law obtains.
We would need to do that generally, so I don't know. I mean, we, I'm not sure what that specific portion is.
Just to verify that, in fact, that was being taken care of.
Just for transparency?
Correct. I'd be happy to go with the first sentence.
Okay. Yeah, I'll maybe build on what Councilmember Jordan was saying. I think the overall title of applying consistent human rights principles, I think is, would be a wonderful bullet point to add. And then including the first sentence, consider broadly recognized human rights standards when evaluating investments. And I do think that that would make sense to happen before respecting human rights and using multiple sources, because I think that really lays the framework to say, you know, we need to make sure that we're applying, doing this consistently when we look at the next two bullet points. I appreciate this amendment.
Any additional thoughts on this side?
So can I just clarify, is it your recommendation that we take out in compliance with state and federal law, just as it's not needed, or?
I'm not making a recommendation tonight. This is literally the first time I've seen it, so.
We'll defer to Councilmember Mickey and Councilmember Jordan as is a slight edit to what we have in front of us.
So I've got to get back to, well, I'll move the resolution with the additional amendment as described of the first clause followed by the first sentence.
All right, we have a motion and a second. City Clerk.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Lopez. Councilmember Hansa Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Mickey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McQuaid?
Yes.
Motion, Karen.
All right, thank you again. Thank you, Councilmember Mickey and Councilmember Jordan and Vice Mayor McQuaid. We will now move on to item 10 dash two, street tree and street lighting program development and potential revenue measures.
All right. Good evening. My name is Mark Hurley, Public Works Director. I'm here with Devora Zotter, who's a program manager in Public Works, as well as John Hawkeridge, our urban forester. And this agenda item is a follow-up to a presentation that council received back in July, covering potential revenue measures for funds, funding core city services and other unmet needs. Tonight's presentation is going to take us one step, one step further into the details around street tree and street light programs, which are important core services. As all of you know, we've recently completed planning documents in both these areas that have guided our building out of these type, of these programs. Can we go to the next slide? So, so that everyone's on the same sort of page or frame of reference, we're going to start off by giving a high-level overview of the development work that we've been doing on each of the program. This will give us a sense of where we are on the programs and then what issues we're running up against. And then we'll present an overview of our current and projected budget needs for each program. And our goal tonight is to get direction from council on proposed scope elements that we would fold into a potential revenue measure to fund these core services. And then after that, we would engage consultants, legal, financial consultants, to help develop the mechanics of that, of that measure. And then we would obviously bring it back to council at various points for consideration and further discussion. So with that, let's jump into street trees. Okay, so in September, we adopted the street tree management plan. I think that's a great accomplishment and we're really excited about the plan. And this was a comprehensive review of our program that started with an inventory and resulted in a holistic plan of our approach of how we would manage trees. It included goals, objectives, actions, key points, that when implemented will result in a healthier, more vibrant, and diverse street tree population. So it's something that's real important to us. It also, and this is probably more important, it highlighted an issue with how we're currently managing trees. So right now, street trees, street tree maintenance is really a shared activity between the city and adjacent property owners. And this creates an ambiguity in terms of the division of labor, division of authority of who manages the trees. And this results in an inconsistent management of trees. And then our city role has sort of by default fallen into a reaction of trying to deal with issues as they come up rather than a proactive program for managing trees. To address this issue, street tree management plan ID'd a number of policy recommendations we have up here on our slide. And one of them is to clarify our authority and responsibility. And they made a recommendation that's pretty drastic is that we shift the responsibility for managing trees more towards the city taking on the full responsibility for managing trees. And we think that has some benefit. They also recommended developing a proactive street tree management program. So this would be less of a reactive program, one that would be forward-looking. And it would include changes to some of the tasks that we already do to increase efficiencies, but then also add more tasks to build out a more comprehensive program. And then the most important piece of this is establishing a stable funding source so that we have a consistent program for the long term. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Devora to talk a little bit about finances.
Everybody's favorite topic. Hi, Devora Zotter, nice to see you all. So as Mark mentioned, our current program is, while doing our best to be forward-looking and consider, you know, issues we might have in the future, is by definition, because of the way responsibilities are divided, we have to, our, what we're limited to is responding to issues as they arise. So our current budget for this street tree maintenance program is $380,000. And this includes our annual planting project, which averages between eighty and 140 trees annually. It includes pruning as required to deal with clearance issues and risk reduction and removals as needed. And then it also includes staff and administrative costs. The funding sources for our program currently are lighting and landscaping assessment district 88 dash one and our parks and open space parcel tax measure M, as well as the general fund. And part of that is the free, the measure DD, street tree planting program that we provide to residents. These funding sources are shared funding sources. There isn't currently a dedicated street tree funding source. And those funding sources are also, also contribute to our programs in parks and open space, both capital and maintenance needs. So the street tree management plan, as Mark mentioned, recommended a much more comprehensive and holistic program. And you'll, so those recommendations included things like increasing our planting targets, doing more systematic and proactive maintenance to give some insight into the delta between the projected budget you see here, which we estimate to be between about $590,000 and $635,000 a year. That is a broad number that would be more developed as we got into a potential funding measure process. But with that budget, we would see increases and more efficiency in our existing program activities, like a more systematic annual grid pruning cycle. We would be able to do a broader and more in-depth annual planting, annual planting projects. We would be able to implement new activities such as young tree care, potentially engaging community partners to help us with this. We would be able to leverage more consulting arborist support for expanded inspections and assessments, especially for more high-risk tree species such as liquid ambers, which we've seen have caused issues in our city and do cause issues in many others. And we would be able to leverage more in-depth consulting services for maintaining and improving our GIS system. And we would be able to invest more resources into robust public outreach. And additionally, another recommendation of the street tree management plan was periodic, likely on a longer time horizon, and probably about 10 years, for periodic canopy assessments to be able to analyze whether the work and the funding and the effort that we're putting in is, how that's going and where we can adjust and learn from what we're doing. So if, you know, these costs, the cost delta here is not insignificant. If we didn't move forward with a funding measure and any associated policy updates to our ordinance to shift maintenance to the city, maintenance responsibility to the city, we can implement some of the STMP's recommendations. Are already in the beginning stages of doing so, such as the right tree, right place mentality. Some recommendations around planting, where planting native species is appropriate and how to adjust the things we're already doing to incorporate as much of the sort of ethos of the plan while we are limited in the actual new activities we're able to implement. It's worth it to note that even our current annual budget is not a fixed number for the future, as we've seen in our annual budgets and just in the world, costs increase for the services that we are already currently providing in this more reactive mode or model. And any increasing, if we weren't going to pursue a funding measure or we're going to try to make our current resources work, it's likely that, well, any, any increases to these costs would need to come out of existing measure M, 88 dash one, general fund resources. So that said, what that may mean is trade-offs between growth or keeping up in this program and growth in other programs that rely on those funding sources. I will pass it, pass the baton back to Mark.
Yeah, two, two quick things before we go to streetlights. I think for the, the recommended activity, the new program, it includes two things, the ordinance update and then the funding measure. I don't think we ever, we want to be in a position where we do the ordinance first and not the, not the funding measure. So we would definitely want to couple that, so they come together or get the money in place and then we can, the funding in place, and then we can do the ordinance change. The other thing, and I think we've seen this across all of our systems, is we're starting to really use GIS in a more like forward-looking piece. And that's what I like about being able, is we can analyze canopy, we can analyze species diversification and really do targeted, targeted plantings or, you know, it will so much more drive our work. And so that, that to me is a real benefit of taking the recommended approach, the more active approach. So with that, we'll jump into street lighting. So this program too also completed its planning study a couple of years ago. This was the lighting evaluation that we did in, or completed in 2024, it was February 2024. And similar to the street lighting or the street tree program, it started with an inventory and the results included recommendations around design guidelines for, for projects up to upgrade lighting. It included fixture specifications for use- It included fixture specifications for use in new projects, as well as replacement of the existing lights. And then it identified critical intersections where we had critical needs. We call those critical intersections. So that's projects that needed immediate attention. But there's also a general community desire for better lighting throughout the city. We saw that in the evaluation work, but we're also seeing it in the active transportation plan that's, that's coming out. So this is, this is a less defined, but something out there that we need to get our arms around. But there is a difference between the street lighting and the street tree. The street lighting recommendations really build on the existing program, rather than, you know, turn it, turn it upside down and rework it. And what we're seeing, if we can go to the next slide, sorry, I should have. Oh, there we go. Nope, sorry. I was in the right spot. Back, sorry. So what we, we identified programmatic areas or programmatic improvements. So the one thing that was clear, we need to address the backlog of failed and failing lights. And this is something that's persisted for a number of years. It's been one of the complaints, I think, consistently in my tenure here. And so we, we have that as one area that we want to focus on. The second area would be proactive replacement of, you know, address the backlog of lights, then a proactive replacement of the balance of existing lights to the new standards. I think that'll go a long way with improving lighting throughout the city. And then we've, have additional, the critical, the critical update, and not only deal with the critical infrastructure or intersections, but also getting some programmatic funding in place that allows us to get into, allows us to upgrade, have, have money that we can put towards street lighting on an annual basis, similar to what we do in other programs. And so can I go to the next slide here? We're going to talk a little bit about the streetlight conversion program. So this is a map showing all the streetlights that, that throughout the city. And the blue and green lights are the lights that are, and I'm sorry, this is not as clear as I thought it would be. The blue and green lights, oh, there we go. The blue and green lights were the backlog lights that were failed and failing. And the green ones are ones that we've already converted, and so those are upgraded. The blue lights are the ones that are being converted right now. We work with Alameda County. They're our contractor that manages our streetlights. They're, they're working on it. We hope to have it done by the end of October, but now they're projecting by the end of the calendar year that they'll have those done. That's, that's a lot. If we scroll back out, you could see the, the stats on the numbers there. Or zoom back out. So the first, the first round, the first couple of rounds, that consisted of the 68 lights. We have 90 lights that are in progress, and we have a remaining 400, call it 500 lights that need to be, need to be relamped. But this, this actually represents a significant change in how we do, do work in the past. It was essentially one light that was placed throughout the city, you know? So there wasn't a lot in the specifications. With the new specifications, we have four or five different styles of lights that get deployed through different areas based on the neighborhood and condition. And so that really was a learning curve for both us and Alameda County, where stocking whole different, you know, whole different quantity of lights, and we're making sure that with the right light, with the right shielding, goes in the right location. So it's a much more robust program. But once we get through this, this backlog, we're also talking about, you know, how do we avoid this situation going forward? So we're, we're looking at doing quarterly surveys throughout the cities, as well as responding to, you know, we get calls all the time about, hey, the light's out, and we go check on it and whatnot. But get a package of lights initially quarterly to the Alameda County so that we keep up with continuing failures until we can deal with a broader relamping of the city. So we can go to the next slide, and I think I got ahead of myself a bit, but we might want to jump. Yeah, why don't we jump to the next slide? So now I'm going to turn it back to DeVore to talk about sort of the funding mechanisms around what we're seeing in lighting.
Thanks.
Sorry.
Good. Too busy listening and the, so as Mark mentioned, we've been able to cover the costs of the currently, the identified failed and failing lights within our public right-of-way maintenance program, within the Public Works operating budget. We are also expecting, as Mark mentioned, to be able to address and cover any, like, until we get, until we are able to clear the full backlog of the lights that need to be relamped, we are expecting, barring unforeseen circumstances, to be able to absorb those costs as well for any future failures. The, the remaining relamping is included in the, for the 400, call it 500 lights, is included in the CIP plan that was adopted in July. This is, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. That project is not funded. The capital improvements project that is included, the two that are included are a scope of critical upgrades, were able to be included in the Marin Phase II project, and a project for upgrading lighting and enhancing lighting at critical intersections identified by the evaluation was also identified for funding. The remaining capital renewal, the 500 lights that's noted here, is currently not, not funded. We have a broad estimate of $800,000 included in the CIP plan, or noted in the CIP plan for the remaining scope of the lights that need to be upgraded to the new specs. This type of project is not generally considered grant fundable, but there are, we had a similar project in 2010 where we did a project with PG&E to upgrade the lights to LED. And we received, we got a low-interest loan, which it may be, there might be similar options that we can investigate there for funding this type of project. And the loan repayment would, could be incorporated into the operating budget and would potentially need funding to cover that repayment. The other capital improvement projects, as Mark mentioned, we are seeing the desire for these things. And in general, we, we do try to incorporate, like we did with Marin Phase II, where possible, we try to incorporate these elements into larger project, lighting elements or, or elements into larger projects to be able to optimize costs, if it makes sense with the schedule of the project. We also, and we benchmarked this number here, which we're seeing, an investment of about $150,000 to $250,000 annually would likely enable us to have the flexibility to add smaller elements to larger projects, or save up for larger standalone projects informed by the evaluation, the ATP and other measurement methods. The, we benchmarked this number based on the costs we got for the Marin Phase II project. This could be built out more thoroughly in preparation of a funding measure. We see this, as Mark mentioned as well, as an annual investment into our lighting infrastructure. We do this with other of our infrastructure systems for renewal. Generally, establishing this number is a little bit more of an art than a science at this point, but, but this would certainly be further refined as we, should this be incorporated into a tax measure. That's all I have for this one.
So, so what's, our next steps with this would be to, depending on your, receive the feedback, we'll refine our scopes, our budgets, we'll engage financial, financial and legal consultants to develop the mechanics of the, whatever measure we do, come back with scenarios of, of what a measure might look like. With the street tree, we'd, if we get the direction, we would prepare draft ordinances that would go along the same way. And then we'd have updates. And again, we're targeting the November 2026 election for this measure. So with that, we will open it to questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from members on the council? Go ahead, Councilmember Jordan.
Thank you. Thank you, staff, for all the work on both these plans. It's been long, it's been methodical, which is not always my approach, so I appreciate that it is your approach. On the critical intersections upgrades project, which you put up on the screen, I apologize, I don't recall that project from the capital improvement plan, which particular intersections are part of, part of that? Were those the ones that were, like, highest on the upper right?
I thought you would ask, so I have brought the page from the CIP. The, I love it when I can predict a question. That is, that is, they're so often unpredictable. I love when I can predict one.
Getting to know me too well.
The identified locations currently listed in the CIP project are Solano and Santa Fe, Solano and Peralta, Solano and Ordway, Solano and Tulare, I never know how to say this, Sonoma and Ventura, Washington Avenue and Key Route, and the west leg of Solano and Tulare, Tulare.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And on the, the street tree ordinance, dependent on council's direction, if there's direction to go for a measure and it should have passed, is, is the intention that, that that one then move responsibility for street tree maintenance fully over to the city?
That, that's, that would be the approach. We would take the funding measure and a ordinance, and however, you know, we would work with, obviously, our consultants to make sure we do it in the right way, but the idea that those come together.
Okay, great, just because I think that would make a measure more appetizing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions from council? Vice Mayor McQuaid.
Thank you both for your presentation. That was very good. I understand, I understand what you said, but I'm thinking sort of backwards. If we were to pass such a measure, would that free up any of the measure M or DD money for other things? Or is it, we can just do more, but everybody sort of stays in the same proportions?
So that's a great question. So we sort of have, we have some options in how we approach the funding. We could design a funding measure with a revenue target that would essentially allow some of that funding to be rebudgeted elsewhere. We could go for a smaller revenue target to merely supplement. It would sort of be, we could present, in analysis, we could, we could present multiple scenarios.
I think, I think our hope would be, or my hope would be, to get something stable around street trees, because that's, that's, you know, similar to other infrastructure systems. It's not going away. And where maintenance and capital needs in parks and open space might shift, when, you know, we might do more in parks one year, more in parks and open space. I think we're going to get to a consistent sort of level spend around street trees. And, and I think it's, taking that out of the tug-of-war of priorities would be helpful.
And then one other question. The remaining 500 lights that need to be taken care of, understanding there's no funding right now, but when the funding is available, about how long does it take to do 500 lights?
We would, we would hire a contractor to, to do that, rather than Alameda County Public Works. I think one of the, Alameda County is great, and they're incredibly efficient, but they don't, are cost-effective, but, you know, they don't have the resources, a contractor. The, the beauty of hiring contractors, which you might pay a little bit more, is that you have a beginning and end date. And, and I think we can probably push it. I, I don't know what that would be, but I think it's measured in months, not years, if we have the full month, the full.
That answers it.
Full money. I figured, I figured that's where you're going, but I didn't want to, I didn't want to put a full number.
Mark.
Okay, thank you.
Scale always helps. Any additional questions from council at this time? Not seeing any. I will take it to public comments. Do we have any public comments on this item, the clerk? All right, bringing it back to council for discussion. And I will say again, thank you very much for the presentation updates. As a father who has a child who walks pretty regularly in times where it's starting to get a little darker now, I do appreciate efforts being made, particularly around Canes Avenue, where the YMCA is at. A lot of young folks who are going to be walking around the streets pretty soon. Yeah, youth in government. But yeah, I think the stands, we here on council got pretty clear idea of where we're at and recommendations that we ought to move forward with as a council for city staff. But I'll open up for any additional discussion. Let's see, Councilmember Hans R. Merow.
Yes, and I just have to say thank you again to staff and everything. It made a huge difference already. One of the lights have been replaced on my block. Now I can actually send Ella out to go take the garbage out. She's like, this is amazing, I can see. So it's definitely been noticed, for sure.
Any other further discussion?
Yeah, sure. Thanks for putting up the map of the failed lights. And I don't know if you used the data that volunteers put together or not, but I figured I would.
So that was, there were multiple sources that went into that, because one of the, we had multiple surveys, and we had some that had been replaced. So, and so we used each one of them and sort of went out and developed a list, and then confirmed it. So it was, it definitely had some basis in, in that, as well as other sources.
Great, thanks. Well, I just wanted to recognize volunteers who went out and looked at all the streetlights in the city, developed GIS later on, what their status was. I am certainly in favor of proceeding, and, but some things that I would like to see when it comes back is the, as was mentioned, to give us options, where the breakdown of the 380K, plus or minus, in terms of how much of that is from the general fund, how much of that is from measure M and the LAD 88-1, unless you happen to know that now.
I do.
You do? Yes.
We currently program 200K of measure M, 85K of 88-1, and 95K of the program remains in the general fund. 45K of that is allocated to the street tree planting that we offer to residents free of charge.
Okay, so 45 of that is, it's all general fund. Just to be clear, it's all general fund. But it's notionally meeting the one-third recommendation in measure DD to spend it on climate adaptation, so 45 from that and 50 otherwise. But that's helpful, because it's one model I have, which is not, can leave my final place, is that the measure would be calibrated to displace the general fund portion, and then additional on top of that. Maybe to put some numbers out, if the entirety of the, if the entirety of the amount was to be in a measure, and, and the basis I currently have in mind for the measure would be based on land area, because street trees and street lights are based on land area. It doesn't matter how many people are living on adjacent parcel. And that's the, 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 measure C was 1.7 cents per square foot, and that generated about $390,000. I mean, that was what the, the measure had, and we'll see what it actually generates. But, and so were this to, were such a measure as this to generate all of the revenue that's been put up, so displacing the entirety of measure M, LAD 88-1, general fund, it would be about, let's see here, it would be about four cents a measure? Yeah, it'd be about, I mean, sorry, four cents a square foot. It'd be like $200 per 5,000 square foot property, which is the largest, generally largest R1 And then if we cut that back so that it's only the, only displacing the general fund, then obviously it would be somewhat, somewhat less than that, maybe like three cents. then obviously it would be somewhat, somewhat less than that, maybe like three cents. So, just things to think about in terms of viability, appetite. I'm also interested, as a part of this, the, in the possibility of a measure on the ballot to replace Measure M and LAD 88-1, unless staff says this is a bad idea, to have a single measure, and have that measure based on building square footage, because demand on the parks is more calibrated by building square footage than land square footage. And that would be more equitable in terms of the existing measure, and we have, we have other taxes now that are building square footage. If we don't, it's readily done, it's readily available. A number of cities are doing that. So, those are my thoughts. Oh, also, I was interested in having a breakdown of the consulting outreach and program administration category, which all rolled together. And in total, those were between two-fifths and half of the total estimate for the street tree program. So I was interested in getting a little more, more texture on that, since it's a pretty large, large bucket. Thanks very much.
Yeah, I can, I can respond to the consulting and budget question, which is that we used broad estimates for, for this number, but certainly in a, as we build out the program and the scope, we could include more specific numbers. In general, that the consulting number includes, you know, more regular assessments for the more at-risk or mature trees, includes GIS, includes the cost of staff, sorry, you said program and administration, and it includes the cost of having, having staff run the program, consulting arborist for, as needed, for, for projects. And, and, you know, so a number of, a number of the costs of the program is not just in the maintenance task, but also in the monitoring and assessment and project planning. So there's a, there's a lot of costs that go to that.
Thanks. Another thought that did occur to me, that would be good to get staff's impression, is since the street tree program at this level would be new, I'm kind of inclined to take a 10-year tax approach to it, rather than indefinite, that there's sort of a forced, a forced relook at it, recalibration, like we've done with sidewalk tax. Of course, that could be in conflict with this ordinance, you know? We pass this ordinance, we take responsibility, and then, so I don't know, it could be in conflict with each other.
The only comment I have for that is just that for whatever we do for the street light element, we would want to make sure that if we included financing, that we align the financing period with the funding period, which may increase our annual costs from what has been estimated.
Thanks. I'm seeing from the, the gathered brain power over here on this side, that making it indefinite is far preferred if we're going, the city's going to take that step of taking responsibility for street maintenance. So thank you for considering that.
Yes, Councilmember Mickey.
I didn't have any questions until Councilmember Jordan brought us some point. I mean, it does, Malin, I'm specifically looking to you, and we don't necessarily need to answer this, all of this tonight, but I assume there's a way of writing the ordinance or the language that says that we, we are not indefinitely taking over ownership and responsibility of the street trees, that we are simply taking over the, for a period of time, the maintenance? Is there, is, in other words, I, I would be cautious that we are essentially setting it up where the city is indefinitely going to be legally responsible for the trees.
That was my understanding.
Okay.
So, so I would want the funding source to be indefinite if we're going to take on this.
It's kind of a, we're kind of going down a one-way road here.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And, and I was trying to think, as you were asking the question, if we somehow tied it to the funding source, but I think that's pretty tricky, because even, even if we made this indefinite, it may at some point produce an amount of money that does not capture the responsibility.
Maybe that was.
All right, thank you. No, no, I'll just say, reiterate, I trust that city staff will do a stellar job with bringing back recommendations for possible ordinance and financial analysis for options. I think a lot of us right now are on this sensitive line of fiscal health for our city, especially with everything going on outside of our city, the external factors that do impact us. And I think, you know, we want to be as mindful as possible, and I trust that city staff will be when they come back with any, any and all options. With that said, just for clarification, does any of this require a formal council vote, or just taking?
I think we have what we need.
All right, sounds good. With that said, I will close out item 10-2. Thank you, city staff. All right, we will now move on to item 11, new business, request for use of city council discretionary funds. I'll give a few short words, and then I'll pass to the city staff before we take on questions from council. What we have in front of us right now is a recommendation that I put before council for consideration. We have a few initiatives that are worth considering for us to support. I will make it very clear that we are limited in supporting what is currently on, what is currently attached into the memo right now, and what is formally agendized. And that I had put the guardrail of no more than a total sum of $5,000. That certainly doesn't mean we need to expense all that, and I just want to make that absolutely clear, as I, just moments ago, we're talking about fiscal health of our city. But I want to make sure that there's a good cushion room for all of us to work with and get creative with what's in front of us. So I say that just to emphasize, I know some of us may have other creative and innovative ideas to potentially use for discretionary fund, but if you do have any of that, please make sure you run it with, with our city staff, particularly our city manager, to potentially come for a future agenda item. What we do have in front of us for options is looking at the option of one, emergency preparedness kit, especially as we are dealing with a litany of issues in a climate emergency, and our city is no exception to that. And always worthwhile to make sure that our residents are well-prepared and equipped. The other option before us is funding, or supporting the city to fund the purchase of more red cards and more languages. I do recognize that we could do a bit better than just having red cards in English and Spanish, and want to hold space and acknowledge that we do have many folks of Asian identity who speak different languages as well. And as well, the option of adapting our sanctuary city banner into mass production of posters to provide to our local businesses and our community members alike, so that we have a sense of collective, of, of energy with each other and connectedness, similar to previous year's campaigns around Albany Stands United Against Tate. This is an opportunity for us to truly put our money where our mouth is when we say we're a sanctuary city, and also standing up for our community members, and sigling as such as well. And then lastly, as attached in the agenda, there are opportunities to possibly sponsor the Winter Harvest Festival that's going to be hosted at the Giltrack Farm on Friday, December 5th. I think we all got flyers for that. There are different tiers, which is attached in your agenda packet. And with that said, I will bounce to city staff if there's any additional input or dollar values attached to anything.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Just a brief follow-up to the mayor's memo and, and commentary there. In terms of general round numbers, if you will, to walk through some of the proposals, red cards, to purchase 1,000, it's about $100. And there are multiple languages. I believe right now we have both Chinese and Spanish in addition to English. There are other languages available that we could retain. Posters are looking like about $170 for a print job of 200. That's one of our standard print jobs, but as you can likely assume, we may get a better quantity break, cost per poster, depending on how many we print. So that's a relative number. Also, in terms of the emergency kits, I think there's quite a few scaling examples of, you know, 10 to infinity, really, in terms of price of those. Clearly, we would look for something more reasonable and an easy, managed thing to share with our community at different events. I think our mini expos and upcoming Public Safety Expo would actually be thoughtful opportunities. Fire Department just let me know today, fire chief has found a, not, not that we would be dead set on this necessarily, but as an example, a solar-powered flashlight is pretty significant, not just a, you know, kind of RBG giveaway, but probably a useful tool that doesn't require batteries and, and just maybe more community-minded, so that, that could be an option. I believe those are at about a $10 price point, but certainly more research could be done. And I think that's really all I had to add.
All right, thank you. With that said, I will bring you back to council for any questions before we go into public comment. Any questions from council members?
So, this is kind of a, a bit of a new approach, I think. And I'm, I'm, I'm going to make this into a question. So what is our process for how we determine what we're going to award funding to? And like, is there a time in the year, or? It's, it's just, it's feeling like we need to have a process in place. And while these are fine, worthy causes, I'm not sure, except for, except for the one with a specific date, that we need to do it tonight. And so I'm wondering if it, if it makes more sense to have a process first, and then, and then award funds, rather than be in the position of people saying, oh, I, I didn't know you did that, and now the money's going.
Well, thank you, and I think that's, to tread the lines of conversations not on the agenda, but I think that is certainly something that we could propose as a future agenda item to discuss more of. Completely hear that out, that process and having process and protocol does help. Any additional questions from council? Yes, Councilmember Jordan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for bringing the proposals forward. In terms of the emergency kits, do you have any idea how many you have in mind? Because I mean, if we're giving them away at city events, it could be, I could see 100, 1,000, we could hit that many pretty readily, and even if they're only, it's going to be more than $10 apiece, I mean, like 40, 50, I don't know if they're going to be meaningful, so that could add up to a lot of money pretty quickly. Now I know there's a cap on it, but I'm interested in having more texture around that, if you...
Yeah, no, I don't have a set number, and that's why I intentionally kept it vague within the memo, so that we have an opportunity to discuss. And maybe that feeds into the point that Vice Mayor McQuaid had just inquired about, but I think there is an opportunity to, you know, if a decision is made tonight to set that baseline, or what investment in emergency preparedness kit or equipment looks like to assist our fire department, our city staff during events. So whether, yeah, we'd like to do 40, or if council says we'd like to buy 100, or, you know, maybe it's not a set item, but set dollar value, that we now give them flexibility to work with. And similar could be said for the posters or red cards, but I think having more concrete numbers for those other two items is also additionally helpful, to kind of have, again, a baseline for where we might land if we have the council were to support, to support any of those other additional items. Not seeing any.
Say one more thing. I think regarding the emergency kits, I think we could, you know, I'm trying to make a question. Have we, have we thought about the CERT nonprofit and the fire department, if they have access to funds? I know the CERT people have been amazing at getting grants, and this might be something that, that they could do also, well, I'll come back to that in comments.
That I'm not entirely sure on. I can defer to city staff for that inquiry.
As we've received presentations from CERT with the graduation events, I believe their current grant is pretty focused and specific in tasks, so I don't know that it would lean towards this opportunity. That's not to say that there's likely some funding opportunities out there. We would have to look into that further.
And then, was there a question about nonprofits?
If there's a way we could partner with nonprofits in this, and sort of thing, you might remember several years ago Rotary had to-go bags, or go-bags, we gave out through the senior center and to seniors in town. So that may be an opportunity to partner with another group.
Thank you. And I guess a follow-up question to that question. If we wanted to consider that as part of use of the discretionary funds for emergency kits, would we be allowed to discuss that this evening, or would that have to be tabled for a future agenda item?
The agenda description just says request for use of city council discretionary funds. Obviously, the recommendation and the resolution has, you know, more detail. So, we could probably talk a little bit about it, but I don't think you would take action tonight. You could bring that back.
Okay, thank you. All right, not seeing any additional questions from council. I will take it to public comment. City Clerk?
Stacy, and then Margie.
My name is Stacy Ueda. I'm an Albany resident and a proud parent of two recent Albany High School graduates. And I also have been an eighth-grade English and history teacher at Albany Middle School for more than 20 wonderful years. And I am here this evening to ask for the council's support in helping to fund the field trips for Albany students to experience the UC Giltrack Community Farm. For the past two years, I have had the amazing opportunity to bring my eighth-grade classes to Giltrack Farm. The lead-up lessons too, and the field trip itself, have enriched my students' understanding of growing organic food, their appreciation of local history, and their respect for the LaShawn Nation, the Native Californians on whose land we are having this meeting tonight. Even though the farm is just across the busy street from this building, the volunteer farmer leaders have created an oasis. My students forget their devices and the sounds of traffic, and end the trip holding bundles of flowers and feeling true accomplishment after turning the compost. In short, the field trip to Giltrack Community Farm fortifies Albany children with fresh air and new perspectives on the meaning of food, farming, and indigenous history. Please amend Resolution 11-1 to include matching the school district's funding for field trips in the amount of $10,000, if you can ask, in addition to all the other important work of that resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. My name is Margie Marks. We in the City of Albany are so fortunate to have a resource such as the Giltrack Center, the Giltrack Farms. The Giltrack, we need to treasure it, support it, and help it thrive. They offer fresh, they have tons of fresh, free food that goes to, distributed to community food banks. It's a hands-on space for learning about sustainable farming and ecological processes. It's a crucial habitat for our monarch butterfly population. Most important, it's a great vehicle for us as Albany citizens to connect with our indigenous community. Needless to say, I'm in favor and support any and all support that we could give to the Gil... the Giltract community. And I want to talk about the red cards. According to a website called Data USA, which I'd never heard of, so that's why I'm letting you know, because I don't know if it's true, but what it said was, as of August 2023, 25% of Albany residents were born outside of the United States. And I think if, even if you have legal status as an immigrant, it doesn't mean that you are out of risk for potential harm. Even if you are an indigenous person, you're not out of risk for potential harm. So I think the red cards and putting posters up is really, really important. And I would ask you to look at the population of Albany. It's 13% Latino. It's over 30% Asian. I know there's a lot of Asian languages out there, but I would really ask you, we really need it in, excuse me, we need the cards. I'm sorry, I'm so nervous tonight, I don't know why, but I really, I'll get through this. We have a lot of people who are living in Albany now, from the Nepali community, who don't speak English. They speak Nepali. I deal with them in community programs. And please, please get some of those red cards in Nepali. And in the other Asian languages that I may not be aware of the need here in Albany, but I know that that is a big need, and I would really like our citizens to know, our citizens, their immigrants, that we will be there to support them, whatever their status is. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Emily Astri. My name's Emily Anand. I'm a first-grade teacher at Marin Elementary, a farm volunteer, and I'm a resident of Albany. I wanted to speak for a moment in support of the Giltract Farm and in support of amending the resolution to match the school district's funds for the field trips. When I first arrived in Albany in 2021, as a new immigrant to the US, I was looking for community, and I first found that community by volunteering at the farm. Now, as a teacher, I've been able to take two of my classes to visit the farm, and the trips have been a great success. I always think the most important thing is that they are enjoyable and engaging for the children, and a wonderful bonding experience for my classes. At our closing circle at the end of the year, I always ask my classes, what is a highlight for them? And the field trip featured very heavily in that circle. Of course, it was also educational. It supported the children with their understanding of food systems, their local area, and so importantly, of civics. The trips also brought families in. They get to hear about the farm via their children and by volunteering to chaperone, and this is really important, especially at a time where food insecurity has been such a huge issue. I also hope it will help the many families who are new to Albany, including so many of my neighbors in the University Village, to find the community that I did when I first arrived. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Astri. I'm a farm community member at Giltract, and I'm here to urge you to amend Agenda 11-1 to include the school district's funding, to match the school district's funding of $10,000 to fund the field trip. I'm an immigrant, asylum immigrant from Indonesia, and I really appreciate Mayor Lopez, your commitment to protect our immigrant community through the purchase of red cards. But growing up in Indonesia, a city of 20 million people, second-largest city in the world, and I grew up in the heart of it, in downtown area, I grew up with such limited access to outdoor spaces, so far removed from my food system, not knowing what produces in season. And I know what that experience was like, and knowing that Giltract Farm is providing and cultivating access to our young people, to our Albany youth, to experience what it's like to be attuned and in touch with our food system is an amazing opportunity. And this is an opportunity for you all to make a difference, because without the support of the city, the school district will not be able to release its funds and its commitment to fund $10,000. And that will definitely heavily impact the future of the field trip programs. Without the city's support, the field trip program will no longer be able to continue this year and next year as well. And we know that the field trip program works, because last year, through the support of the city, through the SSB Tax Partnership with Giltract Farm, over 400 students were able to visit the farm. And from that field trip, a group of high school students has started a club at Giltract Farm, and they volunteer every week on Fridays at the farm, and they even are part of our core farming community and make decisions alongside of all the other farm volunteers. So this is a program that works, has track records that is proven effective, and as you've heard from the educators before you tonight. So again, I urge you all to amend this proposal to include the $10,000 to match the school district's commitment to fund the field trip. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, Frances. I just wanted to see if I could kind of bring a few threads together, right? So Peggy asked a wise question about what the process is, and apparently, the city council is just as confused about the process as we are, because when we realized that we weren't going to be able to get funding for the field trip program from the SOTAC, we began working with Councilmember Jordan to figure out an alternative funding source, and we've been talking about that for months now. And the proposal that you saw last Friday was the result of those months of conversations. And we were under the stand, under the impression, as I think Councilmember Jordan was, that there was, you know, that other things, that all things could be included, as the city council was interested in, in their discussion of what could be spent from the discretionary funds. So that's why we did all this work to prepare this proposal and to bring folks to you tonight to talk about its value. And so we appreciate that. However, we've all gotten confused about where we are, that what we shouldn't be confused about is where we're going. This was an incredibly successful program last year. We were able to leverage the city council's investment to get the city to school district to be, to make a financial commitment. And now we're relying on you to, to continue working with us on the field trip program. We really appreciate all the sponsors who've come forward for the Winter Festival, and if this, you know, we'd love for the city to join in on that. But the field trip proposal is our, our concern and our priority. And as a teacher, I just have to say that it is the most glorious achievement I can think of for 18 years of teaching, to be seeing my students in leadership roles in the farm now, as well as volunteering and bringing their friends to the farm. And when you got a bunch of, you know, 17-year-old young men saying that they want to start a club and invite 20 of their young male friends to come out and work on the farm, that is a lot of, that is a real amazing thing, not actually something I expected as a teacher. And so I'm just delighted, and I want you guys to continue to be involved with us in taking this forward to the next step. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. All right. That concludes public comment, and I just want to lay out for council, and I know folks unfortunately may be disappointed what I'm about to say, but we cannot talk at all about anything regarding matching funds with the school district or a letter that we received from the school district. That could very much jeopardize any opportunity to further discuss that, because it was not agendized. Though I appreciate folks from the farm coming out to talk, I think it is important just to acknowledge publicly what had occurred. I think there was a deep misunderstanding on what was being proposed for the use of discretionary funds. And it wasn't until after the memo had been sent to city staff, that then we were informed that there was a different request. So I just want to lay that out there, that in case there are members listening online, that's where some of the confusion is at. And like I said, unfortunately, we cannot discuss that whatsoever. Folks are more than welcome to present that as a future agenda item, but I just want to make sure we tread that lightly, even if you actively mentioned anything in passing, that will warrant a significant Brown Act violation. And so I just want to make sure we're all clear on that. With that said, what we do have in front of us right now to discuss, there are still ways to interface and support the Giltract Farm through their Winter Harvest Festival that is on December 5th, as outlined in their, their request for support as well, alongside the other items that are in our, in the attached memo right now for use of discretionary funds. And so I'll bring it to council for further discussion at this time.
I'll just offer, like usual is mine, because I asked under Future Agenda Item, after two meetings, to have a discussion along the lines of what Councilmember Mickey recommended last spring, when we were contemplating how much budget funds to, towards the Solano Stroll and the Strollish events. And he raised that we needed to think more methodically about the discretionary funds. That was the item I requested, that was the item I thought this was going to be. So responsible on my side for not communicating that more clearly outside the meeting. And I will bring forward a quest under Future Agenda tonight, relative to what has been said here tonight. As far as the four items that are requested, I'm inclined to, some size of sponsorship for the Winter Festival, and making some level of allocation for the Sanctuary City posters and the red cards. On the emergency kits, I'm not inclined to do that this time. I want specificity on the model, what's in it, how many, how much it will cost. But I think the other, the other needs are immediate.
And I, I'm jumping. I guess a question for staff or for the city manager, and apologies if this was in the background, but how much remains in the discretionary fund in general?
For the current budget, you have $35,000. That's an increase from previous years of $20,000. Doesn't mean necessarily that the council uses it every year, because it is general fund money.
Thank you, city manager. I'll just echo that I think the red cards are, I think, something that we need to do as soon as possible, really getting it out in as many languages as we can, so perhaps the languages that we have not covered, and reordering if there is a need for reordering of the languages we already have. I love the posters, I mean, I love the idea of the posters. To me, that's not as critical as the red cards right now. I think there are other ways that members of the public can show support. I would love to agendize that as part of generally a discussion about the discretionary funds, because I would also want to make sure that we're, if we're going to allocate money for that, that we're really doing it in a robust way, knowing that there are multiple banners and multiple posters, it's likely going to be a bigger print job than what the city manager mentioned. There are some economy scales, as she said, mentioned, that, you know, when you get to a certain number of prints, they start to get much less expensive. Knowing that we have 35K left in the discretionary fund, not that we have to spend all of that money, but that, that appears to be ample funding for options in the future, I would also be open to discussing an amount to help support the December 5th event. With the emergency kits, not only what is in them, but also exploring whether CERT or perhaps there's a local business that would be willing to help support the purchase of such, such items, sponsorship, maybe they get their name on it, all different ways we could do that. And I think that seems to me to be a bigger, likely a bigger ask of staff, to make sure that we can be cost-effective and truly provide something that is meaningful, because I think that's the most important thing. It's not just something that someone grabs and takes home, but it's actually something meaningful that they can put into a long-term emergency kit that they would keep. And I will echo, and I think I've said this a couple of times, and Councilmember Jordan brought this up, but what Councilmember, sorry, Vice Mayor McQuaid said, which is really thinking, us thinking a little bit hard about a long-term process we might want to put in place. We don't need to decide it tonight, we don't need to decide it this year, but really, you know, is, what is this process in which we do discretionary fund? I think there's a benefit to the discretionary fund being a little bit loose, that as things come up, we can identify them, but perhaps maybe being more strategic in saying that we'll be at least biannually reviewing it, and so that we have opportunities to be collecting and all of us collectively thinking about where we might be spending some of that money. So with that, I'll give it to others.
I'll just say again, I think what you've said, all of you've said, is that we, we really need to have some type of process, and that we're sort of thinking long-term about things like the Solano Stroll and the Film Fest, and things that pop up every year. And then, how do we deal with things that are great ideas that come up out of the blue for us at least? And how do we make that equitable? And how do we make it fair? And how do we let people know that there's such a thing they can apply for? So I think, Preston, I think I heard you say you're going to ask for an agenda item? Okay, I could support that. As far as tonight, I, you know, I've done a lot of events, and usually when you're asking for sponsors, the sponsor gets something, they get their logo, they get admission, they get something. I'm not, and it comes through some sort of a form that, you know, we'd like you to sponsor this, and this is what we're doing, and this is what we're hoping to do, a prospectus, if you will. And I'm not seeing that even for the Winter Carnival or Winter Fest. It, it just feels a little loose. I'd like to have a little more idea of what we're doing. The red cards and the posters, you know, I think are a great idea. I'm not sure we need to do it tonight. Maybe it comes as part of the whole discussion about the process. And I think if, I could be convinced to vote for those tonight, but that would be the one.
I will say really quickly on the agenda item attachments, for the different tiers for sponsorship, it does list what the city could get, whether that's logo recognition or opportunity to table or have flyers or banners on display at the event, and so forth.
I just, you know, I see the flyers are done, we obviously missed that, so I'm not sure what's already done that we've missed. Anyway, but I did, I did see that, yeah.
Fair enough. And then, also, I just think it's worth acknowledging before we proceed with any decision on sponsorship, potential sponsorship for the farm using discretionary funds, that I acknowledge that I am on the advisory council or UC Giltract Farm, but there is no financial interest whatsoever, as we all know that. Simply serving as a council liaison for, for that advisory body. I'm hearing potentially maybe the best route forward, maybe doing like a little piece-wise function here, item by item. I think right now, the general consensus I'm grabbing around the emergency kits, and I think, and I'm agreeable to this, that that's something we don't need to make a decision on this evening. And I think that's fair. I think it could be, we could flush that out a bit better with city staff at a future time when we, if we agendize that again. There are some variables we don't fully have control over, aren't fully aware of. But I think, and I, not think, I, I do feel like it is, it is our responsibility to push forward at minimum with the red cards and the posters. That's where I give my gentle pushback, because I think our community needs to know that we truly do stand on business when we say we're Sanctuary City, and I do feel in my, my heart that... when we say we're a sanctuary city, and I do feel in my, my heart that there are community members who do feel a bit others right now, and not having accessible information that they could provide to their elders or their family members, and I want to be mindful of that. And as we just heard, possibly most recent data reflects about 43% of the folks in our community are, you know, falling within the categories of, you know, being Asian or Latinx, so we want to make sure, I would like to make sure that we do our due diligence in making sure resources are available, whether that's a small red card in appropriate, in applicable languages, or having a poster that reflects the banner that we display across our city. I think it would be beautiful to see our local businesses and homes display that as well, and show that sense of connectivity, and I'm advocating hard for it, because we're about to enter winter months, where unfortunately, it does get a little depressing for a lot of folks. We're going to need to show something that shows that we're connected as a community, especially as we're going through some weird, weird funky times, that I will not digress into at the federal level. And so that, I'm going to make it very clear, I'm going to advocate hard for that, and, you know, you, you'll, you're going to catch me pushing back if there's opposition to it, but I'm open to suggestions, not mean, doesn't mean I'm going to die on that hill, but I do think that is something a bit more urgent that we should support.
Could we just do a motion for those two items to start with, and, and then we can talk about the sponsorship?
Yeah, we could do, we could potentially do a motion for the red cards and posters, it's just a matter of identifying what that dollar value is that we would like to attribute towards it, and then we could do a separate one for Giltrack sponsorship farm.
Mayor, if I, if I may. Yeah, I mean, I would agree, if, if, if we could do a vote on these two items, I would also ask that maybe as consideration for the posters, we go with city manager's initial number of 200, so that we can get a first run and get those into the local businesses, so it's really, perhaps also at the schools, if the schools are willing to put those up, but that come back to us, or if the city manager could bring back to us in December, a number for a more robust printing, so that way we can get the ball rolling on it, both in terms of what does the poster look like, get the first set out in the public, then have them available for the public. I'm, because I, I don't know what is, what would be a reasonable number of posters to propose if we were distributing in general, but if we were talking about providing them to local businesses, I think 200 is probably a good starting point, if I remember correctly, at least the posters that were in the, those, or the posters, sorry, the same as the, the images that are in the room next door, so there, I saw there were four, so that means that we would end up having 50 of each, which means they could be distributed at businesses either as, sorry, no.
Sanctuary city posters would resemble the banner.
The banner, okay, sorry. But we could do an initial run, and then have a more robust option for those who would like to have them at home, and so we could start with 200, knowing that 200,000 cards is $270 of $35,000, it's, it's a, it's a first step that we can get the ball rolling, and then understand if we need more. One concern I have about putting this to a future agenda item is, I don't know how packed our December 3rd or December, sorry, December 1st or December 15th meeting, if we even have a December 15th meeting, will be, and as such, I would worry that we would miss the holiday seasons with these two items, knowing that the actions that are being taken, they seem to specifically pick holiday times, really emphasize what they're doing.
You could make a motion.
Sorry, yes, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with 1,000 red cards in languages not currently available, and that we move forward with 200 posters.
I'll second that.
Do we need a specific dollar value tied to that?
We need a dollar amount.
Sorry, so I will round that up to $350? That, you said 100 and 170, so?
It's $100 for 1,000 in a single language, so if we're, if we're aiming to capture multiple languages, it would, that's your scale.
So I, I'd ask that we authorize 1,250, up to $1,250, so that's eight or nine languages if needed, again, it's an up to, and I leave to staff to determine how many languages we need. That, sorry, does that cover everything?
And 200 posters, which?
Sorry, 200 posters, but all of that is included in the 1,250.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Yeah, we had a second from Councilmember Hans Romero.
Wait, I'm sorry, wait, does that, 1,000?
It's 1,050 for, for, it's 1,250 for, or 200 posters plus as many cards as needed within the budget.
Okay, I got it.
Sorry.
All right, we have a motion, a second, city clerk?
Actually, if I could ask a question, does anybody know how many United Against Hate posters were distributed in the city? United Against Hate?
I gave out probably 75, but the school district had a whole lot that they distributed to schools and...
Okay, thanks. The other suggestion is to, rather than say how many posters and how many cards it would be, just authorize 1,250, and then authorize the mayor working with staff to figure out how much goes to what. And with the posters, there is, there is usually a setup.
We, we have, we have...
Is that allowed? Can we pass it that way? As Councilmember Jordan is...
I'm envisioning these all having a little bit of inherent flexibility to them, as we are initiating some new opportunities in programming, in terms of also how they're distributed and what all of that looks like, so I think this, what I would consider seed money, support money, important to initiate, would be the first step, and then I can follow up with, you know, what's being received, how it's being received, and maybe then we can adjust as we go. So, to answer the question, I think that that would work if we're coordinating on overall quantities.
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather amend with flexibility, because we don't know if we need 10 languages, and setup costs for print, you know, there's a fixed setup for printing, so...
So I will amend my own motion to say that $1,250 for as many languages as needed cards, and with the remainder being available for as many posters as needed.
And I'll amend my second, so we can close this up.
Thank you both.
Appreciate that. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, for red cards and poster at the amount of 1,250. City clerk?
Councilmember Hans Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Mickey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McQuaid?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yep. All right, thank you. We still have the Giltrack Farm sponsorship opportunity on the table, so I am very much interested to see where council lays at this, or at what, what tier folks may be interested in sponsoring the Giltrack Farm, and just for a quick reminder, if you haven't been able to access the document, there's the tier for sprout, which is 500 to 1,000, cultivator at 2,000, which supports half of the harvest festival, and propagator, 4,000, which is fully supported of the harvest festival.
I'll put, I'll put an opening bid on the table, which is 1,000, sponsored at $1,000 level, and I know this is getting ahead of the process, but I feel like, as, in the time when the festival is going to occur, if those funds are going to be used effectively and efficiently, then doing it so now, rather than December 1st, has some advantage, and do I think our process confusion, we have a variety of people from the farm who have showed up here, and I think it's a matter of keeping faith, that would be, that's, so that's the motion, $1,000 sponsorship.
We do have a commitment for 1,000, that's our opening bid. I'm willing to go higher if, if I'm able to see that there's convincing number of council members to go above that, but also in the interest of council members' times, if I'm not seeing that, I, I'm not going to keep punching that in, I...
Yeah, I'm, sorry, go ahead. I was just going to say, to try and give you a sense of support or not, you know, I think my initial reaction is, is, is in the ballpark that Councilmember Jordan is recommending, however, you know, if staff were available, so staff, staff has spent a lot of time at the farm, we have some staff members who participate quite a bit at the farm, it is also an opportunity for, potentially for our staff to be talking to people who show up, that we can talk about our compost program, that we could talk about those things, so at a $2,000 sponsorship, we would have a table that would allow us potentially have it staffed, staff members who could talk about the efforts the city is doing, but that, I have no idea if our staff is even available for such things, because this is not our typical city-led event, so I don't want to volunteer staff to do that. However, we could also be staffed by council members.
I don't think we want to put staff in a position of having to do something they aren't already doing in other ways, and I would sort of go the other way and think of more of a $500 contribution, so we're now, you know, with the idea that 1,000 sort of fits in the middle of all that.
I was kind of thinking along the lines of 1,000 as well, so...
All right, so I think we've arrived at a landing spot that has, you know, a majority of council support here. I will entertain that motion, I'll make a motion that we support the Giltrack Farm winter harvest, the amount of $1,000.
I will second.
Thank you. City clerk?
I want to make sure I write down the right amount. Councilmember Mickey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McQuaid?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yep.
Councilmember Hans Romero?
Yes.
And Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Motion.
All right, and I believe that concludes everything that was on the memo for discretionary funds requests. Thank you all for considering the options that I put before, before you, and I will say, as we close out this item, that from a personal perspective, I do truly support, I do truly appreciate the support around the red cards and the posters, without digressing in too many specifics, but just that it does have a direct connection to me, and making sure families and friends alike are having access to resources, but also seeing that That said, we will move on to item number 12, council subcommittee reports. We'll start off with Councilmember Mickey.
I don't believe I have anything to report back on, although I do owe you a report on my CalCities conference.
Vice Mayor McQuaid?
Yeah, I, we missed a meeting, so I have a lot to report, and I've already turned in my CalCities stuff, ha ha. There was, there were a lot of community activities in the last month since we've been here, the senior center opened house, I attended the district attorney's day of remembrance for victims of domestic violence. If you've never been to that, they do it once a year, you really should go, it's very moving and certainly worth a few hours of your day. There were a few ribbon cuttings, the Starter Bakery, Albany Hill Gas is under due management, we were at the North Berkeley Bart Station for the new Bart path along there, I attended, I attended the pension board in, in the stead of the mayor, I went to the CERT final, and they'll be here, I think, next time, and they can tell you about it, but it was great, and also a CERT meeting with the mayor, I was at the UC Berkeley and the City of Albany annual fall meeting, the housing authority has met twice, once in regular session, today at our budget negotiation meeting, I attended the Chamber of Commerce dinner, where Jack, Kenny, and Naomi Siegel were the citizens of the year for their work on the Film Fest, 15 years of them doing the Film Fest. With the mayor last week, I attended the mayor's conference, and I, I just want to reflect a little bit on that, the featured speaker was Reggie Young from the Alameda County Food Bank, and as, you know, now we're coming into Thanksgiving season, the season of gratitude, I just want to remind everybody that, as, as we say so often, that people in our community are hurting, and they're concerned about where their meals are coming from, and a donation to one of the local food banks, if you're able, is a great way to support our neighbors. And that's it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor McQuaid. Councilmember Hans Romero?
Yes, I attended ribbon cutting at the gas station, and wonderful local family who's really excited to have an opportunity to do business here, and have other, other businesses surrounding the area as well, so, it was a nice little event, and then also the, the chamber dinner for youth of the year, and, and Jack and Naomi, so that was really lovely event as well. I missed the Starter Bakery, it was a little too wet and soggy up, and, and then I've got an upcoming meeting with the Stop, Stop Waste coming up, so that'll be on Wednesday. I think that's, that's all I have to report tonight.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes, thank you. Is the, the lead item for the Alameda County mosquito payment district is that?
Didn't bring my pet tonight.
It is a gyp time, which is a vector mosquito for various diseases, and can reproduce in a thimble full of water, is now essentially endemic to livermore, so there's, there's so many disactions of it, that the district has basically concluded it's not going to be able to keep it from being there, actually, forever, this is a matter of control now, so, that's unfortunate, but that's what it is. And on the Alameda County Transportation Commission's side, one of the items in the last meeting was the active transportation plan development, which is a fortuitous conjunction in time, that that's going on at that agency as well as here, and due to that conjunction in time, I noticed that staff was using an older version, now older version of the NACTA rubric, which is which facilities should be used to address which kind of traffic conditions, and so I was able to point them to the newer rubric, and they committed to using that newer rubric, so, yeah, that's probably enough for now, thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Yeah, and as for me, also with an attendance at the Albany Hill Gas Station, ribbon cutting, it turns out the family that had now purchased that is a family that I know very well, I grew up with, the owner's younger brother, we went to high school together, and so it's funny, and it's fun seeing familiar faces now come into our community, and now I'm trying to see if we could convince his parent to set up one of their businesses over here as well. Additionally, I wasn't able to attend the domestic violence event, because that same day, I was in a press conference with Congress member Latifah Simon and the other mayors within our district, as we were bringing to attention some of the issues surrounding what was at that time, the ongoing government shutdown, and ensuring that we're advocating for our communities. As well, I had attended the Ava Energy and Byke East Bay hosted event at the Oakland Coliseum, to encourage folks to take advantage of the voucher program that Ava is providing right now to Alameda County residents. I'm happy to see that City of Albany, we do have a good sizable number of folks who have applied for that voucher, the rebate voucher program, but I'd like to see more, so, hoping on my, at least on my end, to do a bit more personal one-to-one outreach on that. that. It was a great event, it was really nice just to see folk come out and test e-bikes, knowing that they now have a voucher in hand, to be able to at least see and feel like, see and experience what it feels like, potentially own a bike. For many of them who I talked to, they had expressed that they never thought this was something achievable, much less even just owning like a regular fixy bike, but now to have access potentially to an e-bike, because it's much more affordable. And yet, there were plenty of folks there on site to give expert advice around, you know, safe riding habits and such. And I also ran into former Mayor Nick Pilch, just casually strolling around on his bike, checking it out. I just thought that was hilarious, I'd never knew he did not have an e-bike. More power to him for pedaling around town. We still have not had a meeting with the GilTrack Farm. We do have something scheduled in the first week of December. Hopefully, more updates will come from that. I think last time I had mentioned this, but just reiterating that it has been a challenge partly because of changes in leadership at UC Berkeley, and trying to find the appropriate individual there to represent for the campus. That said, that more or less closes out my, my activities, closes agenda, oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, I forgot that, and you mentioned it earlier, but the Fire Resilience Workshop, for lack of a better term, on the hill yesterday, that was great, and getting free plant was an added bonus.
And you just speaking reminded me about your reference to the mayor's conference that we attended in Union City.
It was, it was in further.
Or it, it's a little fuzzy in my mind, because I got stuck in some gnarly traffic trying to get there, so I got there considerably late. But Vice Mayor McQuaid had mentioned, you know, they're the guest speaker from the food bank there, and I just wanna highlight and emphasize the comment that Vice Mayor McQuaid made, because former Congressmember Barbara Lee, now current mayor of Oakland, acknowledged that the issue of food insecurity is an issue that has vast impacts on the ways in which someone can navigate society, and that providing support for food banks and providing opportunities for people to have access to the food and funding program like that, the strong force multiplier, not just addressing someone's food insecurity, but, you know, local economy, making sure that folks have a, have a pathway to feel comfortable and brave to go seek employment and such. And so just wanted to make sure that I acknowledge that, because I think that hit home for a lot of folks. It made a comment as well that I don't think many other people in the room deeply resonated with, but I think they certainly understood and, and get why this is important, but being an individual that previously needed assistance, particularly food assistance, and what it would like, or had been like, to live off of that, and be, having stereotype projected upon you for that, and that it becomes all the more problematic when you exist in skin that is dark. And I just wanna applaud that, that was highlighted and that was mentioned, because I think that hit home for a lot of the other mayors in that room, because yes, we wanna support programs like this, I think all of us on council, you know, wanna make sure we're taking care of our community, but it's also important to realize the magnitude of that impact when we are expressing support, or at least just driving attention to it. So thank you, Vice Mayor McQuaid, for bringing up the guest speaker, that's really important. That said, that closes out item number 12. We're on item number 13, future agenda items. I know there were a couple tossed around earlier, so here's a chance to formally propose any future agenda item. Do we have any members on council that would like to propose future agenda items? Councilmember Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would like to actually propose two items, so one would be consideration of the request for match funding for the school district to keep the field trips going at the GilTrack Farm. And then the other is, I'm an item to consider a process for how we use the discretionary fund, be two separate items.
Thank you very much. Do we have any additional future agenda items from council?
Preston, the one about considering the process, I'm sort of thinking it might be necessary to have sub, subcommittee or some kind of committee to talk about it, and I don't, I don't know that, but does that need to be part of your request, so that if we wanna do that, we can do it at the meeting? Because I'm talking to Preston, Preston looking at Mala.
That could be part of the agenda description.
But would it have to be in there if, if we decided to do a committee?
We could word it broadly.
Okay.
If you don't wanna do it, you don't have to.
Okay. Would, would you be agreeable with that?
Yes, yes, I would say as broadly as possible, to give us the options, discuss, since we don't really know where we're gonna go with it.
One question, I don't, it's not necessarily to you, Preston, it might be to the city manager, is the timeliness of the request for the funds from the GilTrack Farm. I guess it sounded like it was for the spring semester. Is it, is that, is there a possibility that this would come back to us in December, looking forward, or is this January or February? Like, how soon could this come back to us in terms of?
I can just put out, my hope is December. The absurdity going into the new year, that's my hope. I don't set the agenda, but that is my hope. Thank you for asking.
To clarify, are you asking about the policy procedure item, or just the educational?
Just the educational request.
Does it make more sense to do one before the other? To have a policy before we give any more money?
I kinda feel like maybe this is just kinda wrapping up this year, and then we can start like next year with more of...
Our year is actually July to June.
My concern is, because of the time pressure, I wouldn't want to, the process development is under time pressure, and so we sort of have a temporal mismatch here, so that's why I'm saying two different items. I would prefer not to leave the trip support item until after we develop a process, and I would not wanna predicate the development of process on getting to that item. Imperfect, yes.
I, well, second imperfect part, I think my preference, Vice Mayor, would be to do in the order of policy discussion, and discussion of how we spend the money. In all fairness, I think when we talked about the discretionary fund in the past, or specifically the fund, the funding for the GilTrack, I remember asking, so wait, we're making the decision not to fund the GilTrack Farm? And at the time, the response was that it sounded like the school district would be able to cover the cost of all that. Now I am understanding your desire for having this question about the policy and bringing things for the last few meetings, which was six weeks ago you would have brought it up, right? Because I did not understand that this is what you were, I thought we were generally thinking about, so...
That, that was my goal, was have the process come ahead, but it didn't happen. I mean, I think I first asked in July, and I last asked in, in September.
Yeah.
So for your upcoming agenda, my intention would be to have both of those, and I will work with our finance director. There are a lot of examples of other cities that have a more formalized approach to a discretionary fund procedure or policy, so we can look at some of those, give you our best sense of what we've experienced over the many years of discretionary funds and lack of policy, and see if we can thread a needle that could keep you on the same time consistency with this additional request as well.
Thank you, city manager. All right, not seeing any additional future agenda items, and not seeing anyone in the public with any suggestion. Moving on to item 14, announcements of city meeting events, just to want to acknowledge that the city is closed Thursday and Friday during Thanksgiving week. Any other events or meetings can be found on the city website, and with that said, I join this meeting at 9:19 PM. Good night.